Twenty seventh, twenty twenty four Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, all opposed? Um, note that it was Kamar Williams and seconded by, I think, Adam.
Yes.
Unanimous approval. The first item on the agenda is application number twenty-four dash zero seven four AAR, six hundred and seven hundred Royal Commerce Park. The applicant, Venice Vincent Kaver of HM two V Inc., on behalf of Royal Commerce Park Two Condo Building, six hundred LLC, is requesting architectural approval to paint two existing buildings in one phase for properties located at six hundred and seven hundred Royal Commerce Road. There. Staff, presentate.
Yes.
You're on the wrong side.
Before he begins, Madam Chair, if I could, if I could swear in the applicant, he's here as well. If you could, Mr. Kaver, could you come to the podium where Joe Su is? And his staff indicated we're having a little bit of technical difficulties tonight, so you're both gonna share the podium over there. And this is a quasi judicial item. You've heard that many times before, so if you could both raise your right hands for me. Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and I'll turn back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair. Joe Su Ledger, Planning and Zoning. Um, the application before you is twenty-four dash zero seven four AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to paint two existing buildings, um, for the properties located at six hundred and seven hundred Royal Commerce Road. Uh, the buildings are to be painted as follow. Accent color is pure white, SW seven zero zero five, and the base color is revival gray, SW twenty-eight thirty-two. This slide illustrates the, um, proposed materials and paint color for the primary buildings. And this slide illustrate the, um, proposed materials and color for the, um, secondary building. Staff is recommending approval, um, of application number twenty-four dash zero seven four AAR. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation, sir?
With him. Whatever he says can't do any better.
That, that works. Um, does the commission have any comments? No?
No.
No down there? Okay. Um, is there any public comment? No? Okay, great. So then I will take a motion on this item.
I make a motion to approve application number twenty-four dash zero seven four submitted.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Derry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimous. Thank you, sir. The second item on the agenda, as we move along, is application number twenty-four dash eighty-five AAR. We Rock the Spectrum Kids Gym. The applicant forever signs on behalf of Royal Palm Center LLC, is requesting architectural approval to install one wall sign on the east elevation for a property located at one-one-six-nine Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, Unit A and B. Midi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe on this item, we have the applicant on the computer. Um, I hope she can hear me. Erica, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Can you state your name for the commission, please?
Yes, my name is Erica Brunswick.
Thank you. And, uh, this is a quasi judicial item, so I need to swear you in. Can you raise your right hand for me and let me know when it's raised?
It's raised.
Thank you. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application number twenty-four dash zero eight-five AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to install wall signage for a property located at eleven-sixty-nine Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, Unit A and B. This slides illustrates the, um, proposed wall sign. It's for the, um, We Rock the Spectrum Kids Gym. This slide illustrates the, um, proposed signage details. Staff is recommending approval of application number twenty-four dash zero eight-five AAR. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And does the applicant have a presentation?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Said, do you have an app, do you have a presentation?
No, ma'am. That's, uh, that was pretty much my presentation. Host, host does a good job. I absolutely love working with your building department, and so sorry, couldn't be there in person. It's, it's so much fun to attend their meetings with you guys.
Great, thank you. Um, is there any commissioner comments? No. So then, um, is there any public comments? Negative. No? Um, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve application number two-four dash zero eight-five AAR.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Leland, seconded by Vice Chairman Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in opposed say nay. See that it passes unanimous. Great, congratulations. Um, the next item on the agenda is application number twenty-four zero three eight VAR. Baptist Health Integrated Care Center. The applicant, Urban Design Studio, on behalf of Baptist Health South Florida Inc., is requesting a variance from section twenty-six dash seventy-three C thirteen B to provide for three thousand two hundred six square feet of perimeter plantings, where Village Code requires five thousand eight hundred seventy-three square feet of planting for a property located at four-fifty South State Road seven. Midi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I see the applicant is at the podium. You've been through this on other applications before. You, you know, these are all, and I'm gonna swear you in on all of the items, and I'm gonna take, uh, ex parte disclosures separately, but, uh, can you state your name for the commission, please?
Lency Jean-Louis.
Thank you, sir. As you know, this is quasi judicial. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I guess, uh, while I'm swearing you in, are any other members of your team on the computer or in person going to be speaking on this item?
Yes, sir, we have a, or yes, ma'am, we have members in the audience.
Okay, so let's go ahead and swear anybody in who's gonna speak. So if you're here, you can just, you don't have to go to the podium, you can just stand where you are, and I'll go ahead and get you all sworn in at once. Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Anybody online?
Nobody online.
Okay, very good. And I'll turn back to the commission, uh, and I'll ask for ex parte disclosures on each of the items, so just for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application before you is twenty-four dash zero three eight VAR. The applicant is requesting a variance from the Village Code ordinances, section twenty-six dash seventy-three C thirteen B, which requires one square foot of building perimeter plantings for every a hundred square feet of building square footage. The applicant is proposing to provide, the applicant is providing three thousand two hundred and six square feet of building perimeter plantings, where Village Code requires eight hundred and seventy-three square feet for the overall building of fifty-eight thousand seven, seven hundred and thirty-one square feet. This results in variance request of two thousand six hundred and sixty-seven square feet of building perimeter planting. The property situated within the Royal Palm Toys Office Park Plan Commercial Development with, um, address four-fifty South State Road seven. There are multiple applications being processed in conjunction with this application, and all of which are being processed concurrently. Um, the concurrent applications include the request for a special exception use approval for an integrated care center, which we'll be reviewing later on, um, this afternoon. Uh, variance approval to allow a reduction in the required twenty-five-foot drive aisle width for three drive aisles within the property, sign variance approval for various signage, um, for the center, and a site plan modification to reconfigure the site to accommodate the, um, proposed use, uh, integrated care center. Village Code section twenty-six dash thirty-two F six allows Village Council to grant variances to the code when special conditions and circumstances exist, which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, and does not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. The literal interpretation of the provisions of this division will deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. That the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land building or structure, will be, will be in harmony with the, um, general intent and purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved, or otherwise be detrimental to the public welfare. The applicant contends that Village Code is being met by providing a total of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-eight square feet of building perimeter planting area. However, eight thousand four hundred and thirty-two square feet of building planting area is situated within the Village of Wellington's jurisdiction. Therefore, it cannot be counted towards, uh, the requirements of the Village of Royal Palm. So, uh, what you're looking at on your screen kinda depicts the property, um, to the left of your screen, where's the Village of Royal Palm, is the building, part of the building, as you can see, the landscape and some parking to the right and to the bottom. Those portions are located within the Village of Royal Palm. So, based on the information provided, and given that the aggregate of the, um, square footage of the, of the building perimeter plantings located in both the Village of Wellington and the Village of Royal Palm Beach exceeds the Village of Royal Palm Beach Code requirements for building perimeter planting, staff is in support of the variance request. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to Village Council regarding application number twenty-four dash zero three eight VAR and variance order VC twenty-four dash zero five. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like, um, the opportunity, uh, to present sort of consolidated, just because we do have a site plan, application, and, um, multiple petitions. So I can provide the context on that, but I would like the opportunity to let Joe Su go through, and then I'll follow up with, um, each item afterwards.
Can we do that?
So I think, Lency, at this, at this time, go ahead and make your presentation for this item, and then as we go through, if you wanna do a, a full presentation of all of them now, you can, um, but Joe Su's gonna go through his individually.
Open up the site plan application and, you know, discuss the context there, and then dig into this, uh, specific variance. Thank you. Sorry. And again, Lency Jean-Louis with Urban Design Studio on behalf of Baptist Health South Florida Inc. What we have here before you tonight are five requests, a site plan and AAR application, a zoning code variance for the building perimeter planting that Joe Su just described, a signage variance, a drive aisle variance, um, for the minimum width, as well as a special exception use. And specifically, the proposed change here is an adaptive reuse and rehabilitation of the existing fifty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-one square foot retail building, which was previously the Toys R Us, which we know on, um, four forty-one, which was not, uh, closed, I think, in June twenty eighteen, and we were going in with the integrated care center use, that we did get approved at Village Council in March, as far as the new use. And the proposed is going to add three hundred and sixty square feet to the building for a total of fifty-eight thousand three, uh, seven hundred and thirty-one square feet. And overall, the proposed integrated care center use is able to satisfy village need in regard to emergency care service and similar services. Currently, in the village, there's only two assisted living facilities and two urgent care centers within the village municipal boundary. So the introduction of this integrated care center allows the option for high-quality medical care, as well as more efficient, um, fire response, and really just being able to provide an immediate option for emergency care services to village residents. And here we see a general location of the site. It's located about a mile south of Southern Boulevard, on the southeast corner. And more specifically here, you see our site, we're four point four-nine acres with a zoning of general commercial and a future land use of commercial, and we are within a planned commercial development, which I'll dig into the history here. In twenty-eleven, there were ordinances that changed the future land use to commercial and a rezoning that changed the subject site to general commercial. In twenty-eleven, there was actually a combination of our subject site and the site to the north, which is the Royal Palm, um, Office Park, to a twelve-point-six-five acre planned commercial development that we see today. In twenty-thirteen, we actually saw the approval of the current program, which outlines a twenty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-eight square foot office building, a fifty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-one square foot retail building, which was the Toys R Us, six thousand three hundred and thirty-six square feet of retail office, and thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-two square feet of furniture store. And most recently, as previously mentioned, in twenty-twenty-four, ordinance ten-four-three allowed the text amendment introducing the integrated care center use as a special exception use in the CG district with additional supplemental regulations. And we're coming forth tonight with that site plan to enact that allowed use. And here we see the PCD site plan with the four buildings laid out as described. And here we see the combination of the PCD. Tonight, we are only requesting approvals for the subject four-point-four-nine acre site. The site is accessed primarily off of State Road seven with separate internal access points, um, two to the south, to the Ela Verde Shopping Plaza, which is actually in the Village of Wellington jurisdiction, and then to the north, to the Royal Office Park PCD. Included in the proposed revisions is not only the revised, um, or adaptive reuse and rehabilitation of the existing building, but also a plus or minus twelve-foot shift west of the entry drive aisle, and this is to accommodate entry, um, drop-off and pickup lanes, as well as the required canopies for the emergency use. So I'll leave the site plan here, and I'll get back into more details later, but I will dig into the building perimeter planning variance. And the specific request here, as Joe Su mentioned, is to allow three thousand two hundred and six square feet of building perimeter plantings in lieu of the five thousand eight hundred and seventy-three feet required. Again, as Joe Su explained, we are on the boundary of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, so there is that unique circumstance where we can only plant as far as what counts towards the code requirement on the western and northern side of the building. But with that being said, we are meeting the overall intent where five thousand eight hundred and seventy-three square feet is required between the plantings provided on the Wellington side and the plantings provided on the Royal Palm Beach side. We're actually providing a total of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-eight square feet. There was a prior approved variance for the same item, considering the site configuration, and we are providing a significant increase compared to the past approval as to the total perimeter planting on the property. And then again, as Joe Su mentioned, we meet the variance criteria, and that concludes my presentation on the building perimeter planting item. Thank you.
Yeah. Is there any commissioner comments?
Yep.
None of them.
No comments? Um, is there any public comment? There's still nobody online? Okay. So is there a motion for this item?
I move that we approve application number twenty-four dash zero three eight as submitted.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Derry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Um, note that it passes unanimous. Thank you. So moving on to the next variance application, which is number four, application number twenty-four one-zero-one VAR, Baptist Health Integrated Care Center. The applicant, Urban Design Studio, on behalf of Baptist Health South Florida Inc., is requesting a zoning code variance from section twenty-two dash fifty-one B twelve E to allow for a twenty-four-foot drive aisle width for the second and fifth drive aisles from the north, where Village Code requires twenty-five feet, and a twenty-four-point-four-foot drive aisle width for the third drive aisle from the north, where Village Code requires twenty-five feet for a property located at four-fifty South State Road seven. Midi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the applicant and staff remain sworn, but I'll ask the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application for you is twenty-four dash one-zero-one VAR. Applicant is requesting a variance from the Village Code ordinances, section twenty-two dash fifty-one B twelve E to allow for a reduction in the required twenty-five-foot wide drive aisle for three drive aisles. The applicant is proposing two twenty-four-foot wide drive aisles for a reduction of one foot in the required drive aisle width for the second and fifth drive aisle from the north. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a twenty-four-point-four-foot wide drive aisle for a reduction of point-six feet in the required drive aisles width for the third drive aisle from the north. The properties situated within the Royal Palm Tours were Office Park Plan Commercial Development with address four-fifty South State Road seven. Obviously, there are multiple, multiple applications being reviewed concurrently as we move through tonight. Village Code section twenty-six dash thirty-two F six allows the, um, Village Council to grant variances to code when special conditions and circumstances exist, which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this division will deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. That the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land building or structure, will be in harmony with the, um, general intent and purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved, or detrimental to the public welfare. Sorry. Um, the, um, this slide illustrates, give you a visual of, um, the drive aisles that are being impacted, that currently doesn't mean the, um, minimum twenty-five-foot and width highlighted in red, and with the blue interior on your screen. Based on the information provided, um, village staff generally agrees with the applicant, and giving the errors that occurred during the original construction of the site, staff is in support of this variance request. Staff therefore, um, is recommending a, is requesting a recommendation of approval be submitted to Village Council regarding application number twenty-four dash one-zero-one VAR and variance number VC twenty-four dash zero seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Fight over the computer over there.
We're playing, we're, uh, good teamwork here. And thanks again, Joe Su. Um, you did a great job just really walking through that. I'll go ahead and open up the drive aisle variance. And again, this is just a matter of inheriting an existing retail user. The site plan was approved at twenty-five-foot widths, but, you know, through construction tolerances and errors, uh, errors in the field, we ended up with twenty-four feet, um, on the first aisle there, twenty-four-point-four, just south of that, and then the southernmost aisle at twenty-four. And to further hammer the point of the construction tolerances, the third aisle there is actually twenty-five-point-three, so it's an increase in that, um, approved twenty-five-foot drive aisle. So, given the drive aisle reconfiguration, that that's our limited scope of improvement. The rest of the parking area is remaining the same. We had to request this variance just to make sure that those, um, drive aisle widths were codified. And this is just speaking to some of the challenges, um, with existing water utilities that would have to be moved if we were to rectify it, um, demolishing pavement, curbs, and infrastructure. And again, this site was, um, in use and operation, and all we're doing is pushing that drive aisle, drive aisle over twelve feet to the west. And that's my presentation on the drive aisle variance. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, is there any public comments? I think I'm going out of order, but that's okay. Okay. Is there any commissioner comments?
I have no questions.
No? Okay, great. Is there a motion?
I move to approve application number two-four dash one-zero-one VAR.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second. It could be him.
David wins. Uh, motion made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner David Leland. Sorry, David. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? See that it passes unanimous? Thank you. Okay, moving on. I wanna know why this is so long. Have to read the whole thing.
I have to apologize. No, ma'am, you do not. If you read the application number, uh, and the name of the applicant, that would be sufficient.
Oh, I do not wanna read this whole thing. It's so long. Okay, thank you. Okay, so application number twenty-four dash zero three nine SVAR, um, Baptist Health Integrated Care Center signage variance.
That's fine. I expect you're gonna hear all of those things that you would've read, uh, by either Joe Su or Lency. So, um, with that, as I said before, the applicant remains sworn. Uh, I'll ask the commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
I expect you to read all of that.
Well, we do have, uh, kinda like a summary, um, of it, so, that's, application number twenty-four dash zero three nine. The applicant is, um, requesting sign variances from various sections of chapter twenty to allow a larger monument sign, additional wayfinding signs, more than one wall sign on the front facade, wall sign on the building facade not allowed by code, increased, um, square footage for five directional signs, and a larger cabinet sign. On the property situated within the Royal Palm, um, Office Park Plan Commercial Development PCD, and located at four-fifty South State Road seven. Midi, if you want me to read it for the record verbatim, I can do that.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I can do it if you don't want to, but, um, just so we get it on the record, I think that'd be good.
All right. We have a, a breakdown, um, if you want me to, to, to read that.
You can read right from the screen, that's fine.
Yeah, so, um, applicant's requesting sign variances from the following code sections. Section twenty dash six-zero-one A to allow, uh, ten foot six inches, sixty-three square foot entry feature sign, where Village Code allows for a maximum of seven foot and forty-two square feet. Variance request two, section number twenty dash sixty-one E to allow for six wayfinding signs, where Village Code allows for a total of four. Section twenty dash sixty-four A to allow for three wall signs on the building, where Village Code allows only one wall sign. Section twenty dash six-zero-four A one to allow for sidewall signage on a corner building to face the exterior of the planned development on the south facade, where Village Code allows, um, the signs only face the interior of the planned development. Section twenty dash sixty-four F to allow for an eleven-point-six square feet sign area for the front facade emergency entrance directional sign, where Village Code limits to two square feet. Section twenty dash sixty-four F to allow for a fourteen-square-foot sign area for the front facade medical offices directional sign, where Village Code limits to two square feet. Section twenty dash sixty-four F to allow for a five-point-six square foot sign area for the north facade ambulance entrance only directional sign, where Village Code is limited to two square feet. Section twenty dash sixty-four F to allow for a ten-foot, eight inches high, ten-foot, six square feet sign area for the north facade emergency entrance directional sign, where Village Code limits to two feet in height and two square feet. And section twenty dash sixty-four F to allow for four directional signs, where Village Code limits to two total, and ten. Section twenty dash ninety-five E to allow for a fifty-three-point-seven square foot cabinet sign, where Village Code allows only ten square feet. The property situated within the Royal Palm Tours, Royal Office Park, and located within four-hundred-and-fifty South State Road seven. Village Code section twenty-six dash thirty-two F six allows Village Council to grant variances to the code when special conditions and circumstances exist, which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this division will deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. That the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible of the reasonable use of the land building or structure, will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved, or detrimental to the public welfare. Based on the information provided, village staff, um, is not in support of this variance because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist, which are not applicable to other- to other lands. Granting of the variance will confer on the applicant special privileges that are denied to other lands. The later interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant the rights enjoyed by other lands and the same zoning district. And that is not the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. Staff requests for recommendations of denial be submitted to Village Council regarding application number 24-039-VAR and variance order VC24-04. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Josu. Now Lancy's going to come push you out of the way.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and open it up. Thank you, Josu. So yes, this is specific to the full signage package that's requested for this integrated care center. There's a number of variances requested, but this is due to the unique nature of the use. We're dealing with people arriving to the site in emergency and medical crises and the necessity of really clear, really legible signage. But in addition to that, the nature of the integrated care center use consists of two components. It consists of a off-campus emergency department component which requires its own, you know, numerous signage requirements on its own, but also consists of a medical office component which we'll discuss later in the site plan application. So as such, you know, those two items really drive the need for the variances requested. So I'm going to go through just the general signage program and all the signage proposed in the package, and then follow through with each variance request. So outside of the wall signage here, we have a signage key map. In the blue here, we have a requested entry feature monument sign, which we'll discuss later on in the presentation. And then throughout the site, we have six vehicular wayfinding signs just for proper circulation and proper direction to each component of the off-campus emergency department and the medical office. And lastly, we have a separate sign which we'll discuss in the site plan application, but was approved in the Village of Wellington area. So for the building front facade, our main identity wall sign is the Baptist Health Emergency Sign you see here. That's 133 square feet. And then just below that, over those entry doors, you see the emergency entrance sign highlighted in red. And this is not considered a wall sign since it doesn't have commercial copy, but a directional sign, and that's 11.6 square feet. And then just going further south down that front facade, we have our directional sign over the medical office doors to again really differentiate and clarify, you know, there's the emergency side and the medical office side. That's at 14 square feet. And then the Baptist Health trademark identity wall sign at 60.5 square feet. And then also on the front facade, you have this pineapple logo consistent with the Baptist Health trademark. This actually isn't quite a sign in the sense that it doesn't have structural or individual channel letters. It's more of an architectural embellishment that's embossed in the building, whereas you can see the pineapple element is recessed into the building while the background is raised and it's painted to match the architectural wall color. But again, there's no individual channel letters as a part of the sign. As we go to the south or the side facade of the wall, you have an additional Baptist Health trademark sign at 47.6 square feet. And then once we get to the north side, we have an ambulance entrance only sign, just to clarify, you know, the emergency personnel as to enter the building on the north side as opposed to where the patients will enter on the west or front facade. And that's at 5.6 square feet, and that's considered a directional sign, again, since it's not commercial copy. Then we have our vertical emergency sign, which is a vertical stack and directional at 10.6 square feet. And this actually is on that jog of the building, sort of facing ambulances that will be entering the site from 441, driving directly straight on that northern drive aisle. So it'll be very clear as to where they stage their vehicles. And since we are in a planned commercial development, there is a consideration of existing signs on the development, and there's an existing entry feature monument sign, which is the Royal Office Park, as you can see here. And then the monument sign that we are proposing is going to be 10 feet 6 inches in height, and that's at 63 square feet. And this is a typical wayfinding sign for vehicular wayfinding, which is 3 feet in height. So again, I'll go through each variance one by one. So the initial variance we're requesting is for dimensions for the entry feature monument sign. This will be the sign that we place on our primary 441 entrance. The code requirement is 7 feet in height. We're requesting 42 square feet, or in the requirements, 42 square feet in sign area. We're requesting 63 square feet in sign area and 10 feet 6 inches in height. And this is necessary, again, not only due to the medical use, but for proper visibility of people traveling north on, or even south on State Road 7 at, you know, speeds of 40 miles an hour. And we're also actually currently inhibited by the existing State Road 7 configuration, the E1 canal owned by the Lake Worth Drainage District bisects our property and State Road 7. So there's actually a proposed distance of 125 feet until you see that sign. And this is a challenge where a typical site that would be right on the right of way would have that immediate signage. So we are requesting that increase in sign area for the entry monument feature sign to be able to accommodate visitors and patients to identify the site in a medical emergency. The second variance request is for the amount of wayfinding, vehicular wayfinding signs permitted in the PCD. Per code, you're permitted one per building, and there's four buildings within the PCD. We are requesting a total of six vehicular wayfinding signs in the PCD. And as you can see here in the sign key map, the two on the northern aisle are certainly crucial as ambulances will primarily enter on this northern aisle and need to be able to get proper direction as to where to stage their vehicles, as well as where to park ambulances. We also have a vehicular wayfinding sign on the south for the exit to State Road 7 and 441 to really just make sure that there's clear circulation throughout the site and not to interfere with, you know, the emergency crisis situations and circulations needed. And then as you get closer to the building, there's an emergency and medical offices the vehicular wayfinding sign for anyone traveling from the south or who takes a southern entrance on State Road 7, who's in that Ela Verde Shopping Center. And this also clarifies that the medical offices are to the right here where the sign five clarifies the emergency entrance. And that's very important as to make sure that patients and visitors aren't getting confused by which entrance is which. And then we also have sign number eight, which also clarifies that anybody driving on this drive aisle on the south going east will know that the medical office and emergency entrances are directly to the left. Variance number three is requested to allow an increase of two wall signs on the frontage of the building. The code allowances one wall sign on the front of each building for each business conducted on the premises. Again, the unique nature of this use, it comprises of two components. It comprises of an emergency component and a medical office component. And although this is going in as, you know, one application, one ownership, there's functionally two different processes. And even if you look at the medical office side, multiple businesses that might be considered there with the different practitioners. So the request here is to request the Baptist Health trademark pineapple logo, the main emergency signage, as well as the trademark logo on the east of the building to really be clear about the Baptist Health brand and as well as be clear about potential patients visiting the site in times of emergency crisis. In addition, there is a Florida state statute that is a requirement that a hospital based off-campus emergency department, which is a component of the integrated care center use, have prominent lighted external signage that includes the word emergency or ER in conjunction with the name of the hospital, further emphasizing the importance of that branding. Additionally, the proposed signage between all of the wall signage on that front facade is actually less square feet as we're, between the three, we're proposing 247.2 square feet of signage. Code allows you one foot, one square foot per linear foot of frontage, and there's 257 feet of linear frontage. So if we were to just do one sign, we'd be able to put a, you know, giant 257-foot square foot sign, but we're breaking it into three that is still below that signage area allowance. Variance number four is requested to allow sidewall signage on facing the exterior of a PCD. The code requirement is that this signage can only face the interior of a PCD. And as you see, we have our unique situation of being within the Village of Royal Palm and, you know, sort of straggling the village boundary on this end, where immediately south, it's not only the Village of Wellington, but the Ela Verde Shopping Center. So the importance of this sign is to be able to functionally continue that branding and that visibility to the south, although it's facing the exterior of the PCD. Functionally, it's still within an interior shopping strip. And then additionally here, we'd be permitted 129 square feet of sign area. We're only permitting, proposing 47.8 square feet. Now variance number five, really five through nine are speaking to this directional signage term and the dimensional requirements of that. But with directional signage, again, what's not commercial copy, the village allows two square feet in sign area and two feet in overall height. And this is really more typically intended for maybe a parking sign area or just clear circulation throughout the site. But in this instance, this is important signage as to clarify not only emergency personnel and ambulances arriving to the site, but also differing between the emergency entrance and the medical office entrance. So specifically, variance number five is for the emergency entrance sign that you see above the off-campus emergency department sliding doors, as well as the medical office sign to the right. And both of these are included in the request as to increases in the dimensional requirements for proper visibility in medical emergencies. Additionally, as you get to the north side of the site with additional directional signage, this ambulance entrance only sign again is crucial for emergency personnel visiting the site and arriving the site to make sure that they're getting through unimpeded on the north side of the building to make sure that the west side of the building entrance is limited to patient and visitor access. And then for variance number eight, this is actually a variance request not only in the overall square footage area, but also the height. As you can see, we have this vertical emergency stack, which is again crucial for ambulances and emergency personnel arriving from 441. As they traverse east on that northern driveway, they see that, you know, very clear emergency signage as to where to stage their vehicles. And then once they exit, they'll be able to identify the correct entrance into the hospital with the ambulance entrance only sign. So those two signs go in tandem. And then overall, for variance number nine, this speaks to the overall allowance of the directional signs. The code requirement is two directional signs permitted per free standing building. We're requesting a total of four between the emergency entrance sign over the sliding doors, the medical office sign, and then on the north side of the building, the emergency sign for vehicles to make sure that they stage their vehicles properly, and then the ambulance entrance only sign. And our last variance request for this integrated care center is for the cabinet sign definition for this Baptist Health trademark pineapple. Again, the Village Code defines this as any sign, the face of which is enclosed, bordered, or contained within a box-like structure, frame, or device. We're proposing 53.7 square feet here, not only to be consistent with the Baptist Health brand, as this exact embossment is seen in other Baptist Health locations throughout southeast Florida. But again, this isn't a typical sign in the sense that it doesn't have individual channel letters. It's really just an architectural embellishment, but we have included it in the variance request as it, you know, does show that Baptist trademark. And we believe that we comply with the standards, and that concludes my presentation on our signed variance package. And we're all here available for any questions, if you guys need any. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There's a lot. Do you guys have any questions?
I don't have a question.
I have a few questions. First off, no one drives 40 on 441, okay? They're going like 60 or 70. Can you pull back up your presentation?
Yes, sir.
And go to the second variance, please, with, I think it was the wayfinding signs. There was a slide that indicated where they were in the parking lot in front of the building.
The sort of, wait, let's see here. The key map?
Yes. Okay, so sign number five. So, I don't know, it just looks, if you're going to have a big emergency, you know, over the building, and then the clearly emergency entrance on the right and medical office on the, I'm sorry, on the left is emergency room and medical office on the right, do we really need that wayfinding sign right there in the middle?
So the intention of that one is more for the ambulances that, for whatever reason, if they're accessing from the southern end of the site to know to keep on driving north to reach the emergency vehicle staging. And in my site plan application, I'll discuss sort of this area that's been set out for emergency vehicle station on the north end of the building. But the intention of sign five is for ambulances to be able to continue circulating and get to the north side of the building.
Okay. And then sign seven and eight. So I guess sign seven is for the ambulances. Is that correct? Or is...
Well, sign seven will be more so for, for general population coming from the Ela Verde or maybe accessing State Road 7 from a more southern access point, but just being clear as to having emergency and medical office services.
Well, shouldn't it also say ambulance this way, that go in north?
That's a potential that we can consider.
Yeah, if you're going to have the sign in the middle, yeah, okay. And then sign eight?
That's for...
Yeah, but this is right next to sign seven. I mean, I don't see the need for sign seven, eight necessarily, if sign seven is there. But my personal opinion. Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
And I don't have any, I don't have any questions. Is there any public comment? No. All right. So then is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve application number 24-039. As I can see the need for that directional signage stuff coming into a building where you're operating on seems like all sides of it.
Commissioner Leland? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Derry. So a motion made by Commissioner Leland, seconded by Commissioner Derry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
So it passes 4 to 1.
Thank you. Let me hand it back over to Josu.
Okay. Item number six. Application number 24-035SE Baptist Health Integrated Care Center. The applicant, Urban Design Studios, on behalf of Baptist Health South Florida, Inc., is requesting special exception approval to allow for an integrated care center within the general commercial zoning district in the Toys R Us Royal Office Park for a property located at 450 South State Road 7. Mitty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully that was a little bit more manageable in length. As I stated on the previous applications, the applicant and staff remains sworn, but I'll ask for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application 23-035SE. The applicant is seeking special exception use, approval to allow for 58,731 square foot and... integrated care center for a property located at four fifty South State Road seven and situated within the general commercial zoning district. The medical office uses within the integrated care center may include services such as a physician's office, clinics, ambulatory surgery, outpatient services, diagnostic imaging, laboratory facilities, physical therapy and offices for medical practitioners. The hospital-based off-campus emergency department element of the integrated care center is intended to provide comprehensive emergency services consistent with the main hospital. And reviewing the proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibility with the adjacent lane uses, consistency with the village comprehensive plan and conformance with the village development standards for the general commercial zoning districts. More specifically, whether the proposed special exception is consistent with the standards of the village comprehensive plan, complies with all development regulations of the village code, does not have any adverse environmental impacts, does not have any adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts, does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities, does not have adverse impacts on adjacent properties and is compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood. Does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas and is not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent properties. The proposed special exception will not seriously reduce the quality or quantity of light and air available to adjacent properties, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions. The following are site-specific conditions of approval for the proposed use. This special exception use approval shall become null and void should the operator Baptist Health South Florida Inc. cease operations at this location. Specific conditions number two, the project is subject to and shall remain consistent with the provisions of the Palm Beach County Traffic Concurrent Standards. The site shall remain in compliance with the noise limits set forth in section twenty six dash one oh one Performance Standards of the Village Code of Ordinances at all times. And if at any point in the future should not comply with those noise limits, the applicant agrees to take whatever action that is necessary to comply with the noise limits in section twenty six dash one oh one. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to village council on application number twenty four dash zero three five special exception and resolution number twenty four dash eleven. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Joe Su. Again, we did a thorough job of explaining that. So thank you, Joe Su. Again, this is a village need as to the emergency use. And it's also improving on, you know, what's been that vacant Toys R Us with a, you know, adaptive reuse and rehabilitation. So really trying to provide that, you know, crucial emergency and medical care option for the village residents. And as I'll discuss in the site plan application in regards to the noise limits, we actually have language written in the Integrated Care Center supplemental regulations that all sirens for emergency vehicles are prohibited while onsite. So we have also contemplated that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments by the commission? No. I know on that side. I was gonna ask you about the sirens on the way. So it's perfect. Thank you for, thank you for saying that. I figured that's what that noise condition was about. Is there any comments from the public? Is there a motion for this?
I'll make a motion to approve application number twenty four dash zero three five S E.
Sounded like Commissioner Leland got you. Motion made by Commissioner Derry, seconded by Commissioner Leland. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimous. The last item for the Lancey and Joe Su Show. Application number twenty four dash zero thirty four S P M A A R. Baptist Health Integrated Care Center, the applicant Urban Design Studio on behalf of Baptist Health South Florida Inc. is requesting a site plan modification and architectural approval to rehabilitate and reuse the existing fifty nine thousand three hundred and forty one square foot retail building with a three hundred and ninety square foot addition to be used as an integrated care center with allocated medical office uses for a property located at four fifty South State Road seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry for the redundancy here, but as I said, the applicant and staff remains sworn. I'll ask for any ex parte disclosures from the commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application twenty four dash zero three four S P M A A R. Applicant Urban Design Studios requesting site plan modification and architectural approval to rehabilitate and reuse the existing fifty eight thousand three hundred and forty one square foot retail building with a three hundred and ninety square foot addition to be used as an integrated care center with allocated medical office uses for a property located at four fifty South State Road seven. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the building architecture, color, materials, and landscape plans. This slide illustrates the proposed site plan. As mentioned earlier, access to the property will remain on State Road seven. The building is approximately fifty eight thousand seven hundred and thirty one square foot designated for the overall integrated care center with twenty seven thousand three hundred and thirteen square feet for off-campus emergency department, approximately thirty one thousand four hundred and eighteen square foot designated for the medical office. No proposed changes to the existing access to the site. As mentioned earlier, it will remain on South State Road seven. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the building colors and architecture and landscaping. This slide illustrates the proposed landscape plan. This slide illustrates the proposed elevations. Following our site-specific conditions of approval for the proposed site plan modification, the project is subject to and shall remain consistent with the provisions of Palm Beach County Traffic Concurrent Standards. The site shall be maintained free of all trash at all times. Prior to the assurance of the first building permit, the applicant shall be required to make a contribution to the village tree bank in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred, fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars, which shall be utilized in accordance with section fifteen dash seventy nine of the village code. The art in public places requirements in section twenty six dash seventy five point five of the village code must be met. The public art requirement for this project is one percent of the total vertical construction cost for only the first twenty five million for this single project based on the total certified cost estimate of thirty million, equivalent to the maximum required, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars public art cap. The public art installation shall be placed in the location depicted on the approved site plan and shall be installed prior to the assurance of a certificate of occupancy. Staff is recommending approval of application number twenty four dash zero three four S P M A A R and resolution number twenty four dash ten. Subject to console approval of special exception use, application number twenty four dash zero three five, variance application number twenty four dash zero three eight, variance application number twenty four dash one oh one, and sign variance application number twenty four dash zero three nine. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that presentation, Joe Su. I'll continue where I left off. So again, here we can see the existing conditions of the site and the vacant Toys R Us will be coming in with a really positive use that will support the needs of the village residents. The existing site that is twelve point six five acres for the entire P C D with four buildings on the site and a total square footage of a hundred and eight thousand thirty seven square feet. On our specific affected area on our specific site, it's four point four nine acres and we're proposing a fifty eight thousand seven hundred and thirty one square foot building with a three hundred and ninety square foot increase from the approved retail building. And that increases just the addition of two entry vestibules, one for the emergency entrance and then one for the medical office building. And then within that fifty eight thousand seven hundred and thirty one square footage, twenty seven thousand three hundred and thirteen square feet is dedicated to an off-campus emergency department component with eighteen treatment bays and beds. While thirty one thousand four hundred and eighteen square feet is dedicated to the medical office building. The building will be consistent with the Toys R Us height. It will be going at twenty six feet and eight inches. And I have a graphic later on that kind of shows the comparison. And again, this is the current layout of not only the village boundaries, but also some of these surrounding developments such as the Quay at Wellington, which is the residential to the east, and the shops at Elaverte, which is just south of us. Part of this application, we were required to get approval from the village of Wellington on this one acre and change parcel that actually is owned by Baptist Health to the north. But again, it's in the village of Wellington jurisdiction. So as such, we propose the trash enclosure, which is actually in a similar area as the originally approved plan. A new sidewalk on the rear of the building for life safety requirements as well as what will be a proposed sign on the south end. We required the village of Wellington approval, and this was received on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four via administrative review. So it was reviewed by their municipality. We also received T P S approve on July fifteenth, twenty twenty four. And again, comparing it to the prior approved retail use, we're actually coming in with a reduction of an anticipated one thousand one hundred and forty seven daily trips. Consistent with the text amendment approved for the integrated care center and the requirements of the integrated care center, our integrated care center is going to be providing a medical office component where we'll be providing physicians' offices, clinics, ambulatory surgery, outpatient services, diagnostic imaging, lab facilities, physical therapy, and offices for medical practitioners. And then the off-campus emergency department component will consist of diagnostic imaging, lab services. We'll have an onsite physician twenty four hours of the day, seven days a week. And there will be onsite dispensing of prescription drugs, non-prescription drugs or both, but only for the duration of a patient's stay and not after discharge. And there will also be no overnight stays. There's a limit to twenty three hours of a visit that you'll see in the supplemental regulations. And again, we're coming in with the site plan to actualize the text amendment that was approved in March and are consistent with the minimum size requirements such as the parcel size of two point five acres. We meet that with a four point four nine acre site. A minimum building size of thirty five thousand square feet, and we're providing a fifty eight thousand seven hundred and thirty one square foot building. To be cognizant of the residential to the east, we wrote into the code that the building line of the integrated care center shall be set back a minimum of a hundred feet from a residential structure. And we're two hundred and twenty feet from the nearest residential structure of the Quay, the residential apartments to the east. And as to additional emergency fleet requirements, these fleet vehicles are not permitted to occupy required parking spaces. And our parking calculation contemplates this, and they are excluded from any provided parking counts. The orientation of the emergency vehicles are oriented sort of towards the building and not oriented towards any abutting residential property. And again, as previously discussed, emergency vehicle sirens shall be prohibited while onsite. We also were required to provide a summary and a delineation of the emergency vehicle traffic circulation onsite. So as you can see on the north side of the building here, we have our proposed emergency vehicle staging. Again, this is staging. It's not included any provided parking count. The two pa, the two spaces on the right are for emergency fleet vehicles, while the three spaces on the left are from any medical deliveries or service vehicles. And here is our emergency access exhibit consistent with the supplemental regulation requirements where emergency fleet vehicles will be primarily entering the site off of the State Road seven access, driving eastward on that northern drive aisle to stage at the north end of the building. And as they exit, they'll be taking that same drive aisle to get back onto State Road seven. And again, once they enter the site, there will be no sirens turned on. For the landscape, our site does meet the native planting requirements and minimum tree and shrub requirements. We are removing nine trees and thirty four palms. And of those trees being removed, there's eight royal palms, which were in the landscape islands that were again impacted by that drive aisle shifting west. We coordinated with the village landscape reviewer because those trees, these specimen trees are what require tree mitigation. And in discussion with George, the landscape reviewer, and due to site constraints and not being able to accommodate it with additional tree plantings, we were able to take the caliber inches of those trees removed and come up to a required tree bank payment of fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars, which Joe Su discussed in the earlier conditions of approval associated with the site plan. We also meet our proposer, our required parking. The required overall C P D parking is four hundred and nineteen spaces. We're proposing three hundred and seventy six, and this is a forty three space shortage, but in the original development approval, there was an a hundred and thirteen space variance approved. So we remain within that prior parking variance approval. And then just as far as the uses and the ratio, our medical office is consistent with the village established medical office parking tabulation. While our off-campus emergency department use is utilizing the hospital parking tabulation of one space per two patient beds and one space per employee. And again, we have eighteen treatment bays proposed. And as you've seen throughout this, these presentations, here are the proposed building elevations. And then a comparison of the old outline of the Toys R Us, which you see at the height of those parapets. We're actually taller than what we're going to be coming in with. We also agreed to that condition for the art in public places. We worked out with staff a location that we'd be comfortable to get the get on the site plan, and it will be proposed in an eight by eight pad. We're currently in the process of selecting an artist and we'll be bringing that back to your board in the future for approval of the artwork. And here are some pretty pictures. And we comply with the A R criteria. That concludes my site plan and A A R presentation. Thank you so much.
Okay, do we have any comments?
I'm just, I love to see vacant buildings repurposed, especially for something that's gonna meet the need of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing another emergency room or to our village. Thank you.
I echo that as well. It's nice, it's gonna be nice to have another emergency center that we can go to.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have no comments. Is there any public comment?
No.
Okay, last chance. Is there a motion from the board?
I move that we approve application number twenty four dash zero three four as submitted.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair. It's a motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Vice Chair Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay, opposed. Passes unanimous. Thank you.
You pitched a no hitter.
Thank you all for your time, Commissioners. You guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, you too. Okay. So I am supposed to talk about November dates. So say my notes.
Yes, so before we adjourn for the evening, we do need to discuss our November meeting as it falls in the same week as Thanksgiving, a national holiday which most people have off. We are requesting to move it to the week prior to the eighteenth, which is a Monday rather than a Tuesday due to a few conflicts. So we are asking for that change instead of the twenty fifth to the eighteenth. The time of seven P M will stay the same.
Works for me.
I won't be here, but that's okay.
What we'll do is we'll have, Alicia will send out a formal email. We just wanted to put it on your radars tonight in the event that we could establish a quorum if people have their calendars, but we'll send an email just to follow up.
It sounds like you're gonna miss two of us. Chair and the vice chair, so. Schedule a wedding, I'm sorry.
Unless I can zoom in and my ticket's already registered.
While we have you here, just not to take too much more time. So are, are you all available on the actual night? So are you all available on the actual night of the meeting? The normal night on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, or will you be traveling?
Which is the nineteenth?
The twenty-fifth.
Sorry.
Yeah, twenty-fifth, I think.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, yes, that didn't sound right.
I'll still be away on the twenty-sixth.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
So maybe what we'll do is we'll send both dates and see how many, see where we get the most, and then we'll let you know which one guarantees a quorum.
Okay. Okay, so according to the cheat sheet, we need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Actually, don't we have to cancel December's meeting?
Well, we are here, and we're already talking about dates. Let's quick go over December.
We are gonna cancel it.
Sorry.
Talk about it. I didn't write it down.
So sorry, I know. Well, I wasn't, and then my counterpart here said to give me to go ahead. So if we look even further ahead into the December calendar, it falls on the twenty-fourth, which is Christmas Eve, which is a holiday here at the village, so we are closed. So it's not a case of if we will cancel, it's that we will be canceling as we are closed, and therefore, the meeting follows suit. So there will be no meeting in December for the commissioners.
Thank you. Okay. So, motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
I don't know.
Kumar, it was Kumar and Adam.